Again, for staying or coming. And thank the candidates for being here tonight. Welcome to the League of Women Voters 2016 election coverage. I'm Diz Swift with the League of Women Voters of Berkeley, Albany, and Emeryville. This is one of a series of forums that we're holding to showcase candidates in the three cities of Berkeley, Albany, and Emeryville. So we're delighted tonight and thank the city of Emeryville for hosting this beautiful chamber so that we can have this forum here. Our candidates tonight are on the dais, and I'd like to introduce them. From left to right is Barbara Inch, Ken Bukowski, and Cruz Vargas. So welcome to you. What we'll do is, we would like to, we will begin with a two-minute introduction from each candidate, and we'll start with Barbara, but not yet. And we'd like to hear from each of you who you are and what you hope to achieve in your first, in your term of office should you be elected. Then we will proceed to some prepared questions. One minute will be given, and the timer, Cynthia's sitting here, will tell you when your time is counting down. We will have those questions, and they will be one minute. And then we'll have some questions from the audience, so audience, please give us some questions. We would love to hear what is on your mind. And then we'll have a two-minute closing, and you'll be able to tell us why we should vote for you. Okay?
Linda has papers to write the questions on. If you need a paper, just kind of hold up your hand and wait, and she'll see.
So let's begin with a two-minute statement, and we'll start with you, Barbara.
Hello, my name is Barbara Inch, and I've lived in Emeryville for about 13 years. I'm a very passionate mother and feel very strongly about public education here at Emeryville. I hope to make Emeryville schools a source of pride. I feel like we're at a turning point. It's very crucial that we get back to the most important task of educating children. For the long time, there's been a lot of emphasis on buildings, and I feel like it's now time that we need to improve our test scores, we need to provide services for children that live in Emeryville so they can attend Emeryville schools.
Okay, that's it. Ken?
Hi, my name is Ken Bukowski. I've lived in Emeryville for 35 years. I served in the city council for 24 years, and I followed the activities of the school district very closely over the years. There's always been a question of economics. The district's gone bankrupt twice since I've been here, and it could very well go bankrupt again. We have a nice new building, but that's a capital expense, and that doesn't provide money for teachers. The district is really very small, and it does not have adequate enough resources, I think, to do the job right. I think the kids in Emeryville are getting less of an education because it just doesn't have the size and the capacity that it needs to sustain itself. I was a co-founder of the Emigo Child Development Center way back when. That was a great idea, and it's very unique for the city. Investing in the children is the most important thing we can do, because you get, if you don't invest in the property, then you get bad results. If you do it right the first time, then it's okay. I'm running for the school district, I've been for the last three years. I've posted all videos of all school board meetings, and I'm concerned that there's a level of insensitivity between the community and the board. I mean, they listen to public comment because it's required, not because they want to hear it, and that's very discouraging to me. I think we can improve the situation and improve the whole community. The ECCL was built to bring the community together, and I hope to use that opportunity to do just that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Cruz?
Thank you. First of all, good evening to everybody. I appreciate you sticking around for the bottom bottom of the ballot. I have to say, I'm here as a parent. I never ever would have envisioned myself trying to run for a, for a public, for a public seat. I have to say, one of the triggers for me in running was viewing the last couple of board meetings and seeing how the board is divided, and it's divided between the members. And I don't think that environment is productive, and I think that it is quite shameful that our kids are being caught up in the middle of politics. I don't think that the dialogue is productive at all. I think that we need to really, really take a step back and look at ourselves and what we're doing with the community. We have a beautiful, a beautiful, beautiful new facilities here that I think are attractive to a lot of us, and I'm here because I would like our school to match our community. I am a parent. I am the only elected, the only person here running, sitting at this table now, that has had a child in the system. So, and I was very active in the system, and I continue to be, continue to be active in the school, in the community. And so firsthand, I've been able to, to understand the concerns that the families have, the concerns that the teachers have, and the concerns that the community has. So I like to bring all that together along with, you know, the expertise that I have in marketing and in moving our school board forward. So I appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Thank you. So we'll begin the first question with Ken, since Barbara started the two-minute intro. We talked about the financial challenges. There is, of course, state education dollars that fall under local control. What would your priorities for spending those dollars be?
The priorities for spending those dollars would be to, I'm not sure, I have to think about that for a minute. Well, I think we need to really market the facility. We need to, we need to get parents involved. You know, one of the things I want to do is I want to create a quarterly wide broadcast where we discuss school board issues. I think where parents can call in, and we have a definite time period where we can discuss all the issues in the school. I mean, I think creating much more openness would be much more beneficial, getting people involved, creating the sense of community. And we need much more outreach to the business community. There's a lot of opportunities to raise money there if we would just spend the time to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Cruz?
Appreciate it. First, a little bit about myself, I'm a, I call myself a performance marketer. My job is to make sure that every dollar that you spend in marketing, you get a return on it, and the appropriate return on it. And then you really, really take a look at how you're investing every single dollar to make sure that the next dollar that you invest goes into the right place. So personally, I feel that I have a lot of experience. For example, recently for PayPal, we managed a $50 million budget a year in marketing alone. So I feel that whatever budget that we have here, I think is fairly manageable. In terms of what I would do with those funds, first, I take, I would very much take a look at all the programs that we're running. I'd love to see a lot more investment in STEM programs and technology and bringing the community in. I'd like to make sure that the teachers have all the resources that they need to perform their job, so that is more effectively where I would spend those funds.
Thank you. Barbara?
Yeah, I think state funding is partially based on enrollment, and I believe that if we increased our enrollment, that would increase our budget. Right now, because of the low number of students enrolled, it's hard to fund things. It's hard to prioritize music and art and extracurricular activities. And I think we definitely are in a good time in California right now where there is plenty of state funding, but that's not going to last forever. So I think we really need to think about how to increase our enrollment and our state funding for extracurricular programs, music and art.
Thank you. And that funding you said was state funding for music and art? Is that what you said?
Based on enrollment.
Yeah, thank you. The Common Core standards, you're all familiar with. They've been implemented with the goal to equalize opportunity for all the students. How do you see that working? Is it working? And what are the barriers that you see to that working better? And we'll start with you, Cruz.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll start with my own personal experience with Common Core. I thought it was the devil. I tried to help with my daughter, with her Common Core math specifically, and it was just so, so different to what I was taught growing up. So it was a challenge for me as a parent in trying to help my child, and I was, I kept on wanting to sort of show her my methods and the way in which I personally learned how to do math, right? So it took me some adjusting, but ultimately, I think that the, the purpose of the Common Core is really to expand the ways in which, in which children approach problems. It's not a single view of problem solving, but rather multiple views. So I've come to appreciate that. So to answer your question, yes, I very much am in favor of the Common Core and what it's doing for our children.
Thank you. Barbara?
I believe that if we're going to have a 21st century education, we need 21st century standards, and that standard has to start somewhere. And I realize that probably people do have issues with it. I don't believe in teaching to testing, but I do believe that there needs to be a measure of success and that the state of California has adopted this as the way of doing that.
Thank you, Barbara. Ken?
Yeah, it looks like it's going in the right direction. We are adopting it for the 21st century. It's a little difficult for some of the established people to make the changes, but I think it's necessary to do that to keep up with the times, and it's overall is a good, good idea.
Thank you. So Cruz, the next question, another program. How do you feel about the values embodied in the new Elementary and Secondary School Act? It's Every Student Succeeds Act, and especially in comparison with No Child Left Behind?
I have to say, what I like about those programs is that, is the purpose. I think that they generally stand for what is right and in making sure that we give our children the best opportunities to succeed, and we give all of our children exposure to all the necessary subjects that would allow them to, to, and guide them to what they would want to do growing up. So personally, I very much like what it's doing for our children.
Thank you, Cruz. Barbara?
Could you repeat the question?
How do you feel about the values embodied in the new Elementary and Secondary School Act? It's also called Every Student Succeeds Act, and especially in comparison to the No Child Left Behind?
You know, I feel like we have a lot of testing going on, and we're already seeing that our students are lacking behind in the Emory District. We are a very low testing in the Bay Area, math and English, and I feel like if you start off behind, those children are never going to catch up. It's going to lead to a higher dropout rate. It's very important that children keep up at grade level and proficiency with math and English.
Thank you. Ken?
Repeat your question again.
How do you feel about the values embodied in the new Elementary and Secondary School Act? It's also called Every Student Succeeds Act.
I think the values are there, but you know, you have to make sure that the information you're getting about the results is accurate. I mean, at the school board retreat on Saturday, we got these papers that make these comparisons about what these kids are getting, and I really question some of that information. If it's accurately reported, it's very good, but I'm really wondering about the reporting and whether it's accurate or not. I'm concerned about that.
Thank you. Not every student goes to college, of course, and vocational programs are an, an opportunity. Are they, we've talked about some of the things that are lacking, but what about the vocational programs in the Emory School District for those that are not college-bound? How are they, how are they working, and how do such paths lead to employment? And we'll start with you, Barbara.
Well, I believe that Emeryville does have some great employers that could help participate with some mentoring. I believe that people should go to college, and all children could be college-bound, and that that is a goal for most parents, to see their children go to college. Vocational training is fine to put yourself through college, and certainly schools could have a lot more help with helping children figure out what they're going to do, but I believe every child should go to college.
Thank you. Ken?
Yeah, I think we need to really step up relations with the business community and get, get much more involvement there to allow, allow kids to get more familiar with specific subjects, because it's kind of lacking right now, and, and so I think it needs to be improved.
Cruz?
First, I'd like to, I'd like to say that I think that we should get kids, our children excited about going to college, even before we talk about vocational programs. I think it would, it will be key. I think Emeryville is, is situated in a place where we have a lot of very, very good and tech-oriented businesses that would provide a resource, and even families and parents themselves would be able to, to serve as a resource to get kids excited, to get our children excited about going to college. That said, I think it's also important to have exposure to these vocational programs because in combination and guidance with the families, I think it would be great, it would be very helpful for kids to make sure that they make the right decision. So I think they're also very, very important.
Thank you. Have you all answered that question? I lost track. Thank you. So this was mentioned earlier that you have good resource, good facilities, but that the financial stability for operations is maybe a challenge. What would you do, and we'll start with Ken, what would you do to assure financial stability for the Emory School District?
Well, that's where I talk about partnering more with the business community. There's opportunities to raise money that just really aren't being pursued. The whole idea of introducing business people to the school is really important. It helps bring the community together. It helps, it helps everybody in the community, and that's just not being pursued the way that I think it should. I think that we can do a better job. I think we can create fundraising ideas. You know, I'd like to create a situation where we could make Emeryville like a big membership club where people could save money on goods and services that accommodate everybody, and a portion of that money could go to the school. I mean, that would be beneficial for everybody and would provide additional money for the school.
Thank you, Ken. Cruz?
Absolutely. I think that one of, one of the ways in which, there's, there's two ways to, to reach financial stability. You can either increase your funds, or you can control your costs. To increase your funds, I would say yes on 55, that's where I would start. Support that. Thank you for writing it down. And then I would, to your point, Ken, I think businesses are important to bring them in as, as a resource, although I think it's also valuable to recognize that in order for businesses to participate, you must give them a reason to participate, right? And as a business liaison, I've played that role before, before my, before my company was acquired by, by PayPal. So I have that experience in bringing businesses and communities together, so I think that would work in our favor.
Thank you, Cruz. Barbara?
I still think the basis of financial stability is dependent on enrollment. We do have a nice new facility. It's not necessarily friendly to the younger children. We have issues at middle school, low performing, and that's where we lose a lot of students. I feel like we do need more space, and I feel like if we don't have more space, we can't increase our enrollment. And I don't think we can depend on businesses or grants to sustain us. I think we're in the business of having children enrolled, and we get money for each child that's enrolled, and that's what we need to, to count on, is having children come to our schools.
Thank you. Emeryville just became a charter city, and therefore you can have the Emory School District under the umbrella of the city. Do you see that any time when that would make a lot, would make sense? Cruz?
Sorry, do you mean turning the school into a charter school?
No.
I misunderstood your question, I apologize.
Putting it under the umbrella of the city, so it's like a unified school district.
I think that idea is, is good in principle. However, I think that even before we consider that, I think it's important to recognize that we're not working together as, as uniformly as I think that we should. I think that overall, there's, there's some, oddly enough, there's some division between the city and the school, which I can't, can't quite get my hands on. There's some division between the school and the teachers in the school and the families. So I think the most important thing, I mean, before we get to that point, is to make sure that, that we unite and that we bring people together. And I think that's one of the, one of the, one of the values that I bring, is that I will not try to divide the board. I am not divisive in nature, but rather quite the opposite. I think that we have a lot of things in common, and we should use those things, those commonalities for the greater good, which is our children.
Barbara? You know, I believe our school is almost in a state of emergency. As Ken said, we've gone through, been taken over by the state. I think we need to be flexible, and I think we need to be open to any options that could present itself, investigate, see what it might look like, but I don't think things can continue the way they are, and I feel like people need to be open-minded and flexible.
Thank you. Ken?
I mean, the city is almost already a partner with the school. I mean, you know, we have a joint-use facility, we bailed one out of bankruptcy, we're trying to encourage family-friendly housing. The city has done everything possible to make the school better, and they're just not performing. They just don't have the resources. That's why I think we need to take a look at possibly merging with another district. I mean, they have a lot of school districts that expand beyond jurisdictional boundaries, and that's probably because it's better for the kids, the resources would be available. Otherwise, we're going to go through this problem continuously, and I think it needs to change.
Thank you, Ken. We're going to move on now to some questions from the audience, and we have a number here. I'm sorry, I won't be able to cover them all. You've mentioned a couple of times, Barbara, that we need to increase enrollment. How?
Making the school a school that people that live in Emeryville will actually send their children to. Currently, we sustain ourselves of out-of-district transfers. A lot of students live here at middle school because they don't feel like they're going to get the education that they want for their children, and that that's made up for by the children that come into us from other schools where this is the least evil option for them, out of either Oakland or whatever school that they left.
Okay, thank you. Ken?
I mean, I think we, we need to explain, expand all the options. I mean, it might be possible to raise taxes. We might be able to put another partial tax, like Piedmont and other, other districts, to, to fund it, to adequately fund it. But improving the quality of the education, teacher retention, I would certainly look to spend money on potential teacher housing. There is available, like on the Rock Holly site, we might be able to put some teacher housing there, and there's state funds that are going to be available for that. That's going to be really important because teacher retention is really crucial, and right now with the cost of housing, I think a lot of teachers are being priced out. So I think that's, should be one potential opportunity. And, and then of course, no, that's enough, that's good enough.
Thank you, Ken. Cruz?
So for a living, I, I do customer acquisition and customer retention. So my, my role as a marketer, a marketing professional, is to let people know about our products and our services. That's not to say that I would, I would run the board as a business in any way, in shape or form, but it does share a lot of the principles. It does share a lot of, a lot of the mechanisms and the channels that will be necessary to get our word out within the current community here in Emeryville about our beautiful new facilities. So I think one of the key objectives to achieve that is to increase family participation. So I believe I have the knowledge and the experience in making sure that we can get the word out appropriately. Again, that will result in higher enrollment.
Thank you. The last question from the audience, and then we'll move on to your two-minute statements. How do you, it's been mentioned that we need to get business more involved in the schools. How can, how do you think we can encourage our businesses to get more involved and to contribute to the schools? And we'll start with you, Ken.
Well, for the last 20 years, I've been trying to get an annual recognition event so that the district would at least show recognition to people who give their time and their service and, and money to the school, and that's just not there. I mean, how do you expect to keep asking people for things and then you don't give them any reward? I mean, I, I think it's something that the city and the district should do, have an annual recognition event, and that's, that's one way to do it.
Thank you. Cruz?
Also, like I mentioned, professionally, I've, I've served as a business liaison before in, in closing deals with other, other companies, large companies, as, just to note. I think you need to give them businesses a reason to be one, to come and participate. That said, I think we have very, very, very good resources here in our school and our children that would make it attractive for businesses beyond, you know, beyond the tax breaks, beyond all those things that sort of come sort of secondary. So for example, Leapfrog does product for children. There's no reason why we should not approach them. In fact, I think it's shameful that our, our board has not approached those businesses in trying to get, and get those deals, to be quite honest. There's no motivation, they lack motivation, and I'm hoping to bring a little bit of that to Leapfrog, to Pixar, and then use all my contacts that I have in network to achieve that.
Barbara?
I think if we were known for having a high-quality school, people that worked here would possibly send their children to our school. And if your child is going to a school, you're much more likely to participate. So people at Pixar wanted to send their children to our school, they would be much more likely to come volunteer, but that's not the case right now that I can see.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience and your thoughtful answers, and now we'd like to hear two minutes from each of you on why we should vote for you, and we'll start with you, Cruz.
Great, thank you. If there's one thing that I'd love for, for, for everybody here to take away from, for me is that I'm a parent. I'm not a politician, really. I have no political aspirations. I do not intend to use this position as a, as a sounding board or as a platform for any other role. I think that is one key distinction. I have, also have no other connections with any other politician here. So, and I think that's very, very important because that's what the board needs right now. I think the board needs to be united and not divided, and I think that we should be very careful with what we do and who we place the direction and the oversight of our school district, because again, we're talking about our children. And I think it's a very important takeaway for me to have. I'd like to close with a couple of things and a couple of goals that I think we should all achieve. I don't think that the board or one person alone is responsible for improving the quality of our schools, but rather it has to be in combination with the community, and we all must come together. So again, I'm running on the platform of uniting and not dividing our school and our community. The way that we will achieve that, I think it's important that we retain and attract the best, the best teachers, and to make sure that we give them the resources so that teachers can focus on, on, on teaching, really. I'm very much looking forward to being endorsed by, by the Teachers Union, and hopefully, hopefully we can reach that, and hopefully that's a vote of confidence and, and that I am very much a teacher's advocate. I will increase family participation. I think that is very important to note, that a school is only as good as the families in them. And I think that if the school, that if we bring together the families and we make them participate, our school will benefit because of that. I want happy kids, I want happy children, and they want to be challenged, so we will make sure that we have an integrated curriculum from K to 12. We have an important opportunity here to achieve that. We will focus on bringing STEM resources and STEM classes to get the kids excited about, excited about college.
Thank you, Cruz.
Thank you.
Barbara?
First of all, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event tonight. I'm very proud to participate in an event hosted by you guys. I'm also proud to be endorsed by Jack Asher and Diane Martinez and the East Bay Women's Political Caucus. I believe in public education for every child, and it's my goal to support parents, students, and teachers, and transform Emeryville into a place where people want to send their children. I feel we're at a turning point, and the time is now for change and to do things differently and make this a place where our children are, and teachers and parents are all a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Ken?
I spent a lifetime trying to organize and bring this community together. When I founded the Chamber of Commerce 28 years ago, it was with the idea of bringing the residents and the business people together, because this city is small enough to do it. We're not taking advantage of our small size. There's a lot of opportunities there. Bringing the community together is going to improve the schools, it's going to improve it for everybody. I have a long history of service, of openness, of providing, I volunteer, I video record public meetings and make them available to the public. I've been posting the school board meetings for the last three years where they weren't really as readily available, and, and that's the thing that's going to do. I don't have the answer, but bringing your people together is going to create the answer and the sanity necessary to bring this community together, so I ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, candidates. We really appreciate your participation tonight. Thank you, audience, for being here. And again, once again, thank you, Emeryville, for allowing us to use your nice facility. So we will remind you that you can find out more information on So we will remind you that you can find out more information on the ballot measures at the League of Women Voters' websites for California, League of Women Voters of California, and for the Alameda County measures for you all at the League of Women Voters for Emeryville. We have other information on pros and cons on all of the state measures on the League websites, as well as some recommendations from the League, so you're welcome to go to those sites. Also, Voters Edge, which is a joint venture with the League, is available, votersedge.org, and it also gives you information on funding for measures, which we always think is quite enlightening. So thank you again, and November 8th, don't forget to vote. Thank you.[1748.26][1748.26][applause]